Good evening, everyone. Call the council meeting to order. Motion to reconvene the open meeting? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Our first item of business is a proclamation to be read by councillor Dollywell.
Thank you, your worship. Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby proclamation. Poppy Week. Whereas the purposes and objectives of the Legion as contained in an act to incorporate the Royal Canadian Legion include to perpetuate the memory and deeds of the fallen and of those who die in the future, to promote care, promote and care, and memorials to their valor and sacrifice, to keep an annual memorial day, to preserve the records and memories of their services, and to see that such services shall not be forgotten by the nation, to educate public opinion regarding national duties to the dead, to foster loyalty among the public and education in the principles of patriotism, beauty, and un- unstinted public service, and whereas every person who has been initiated into membership in their Royal Canadian Legion has sworn to uphold and advance the aims and objectives of the Legion, and whereas the National Poppy Committee has recommended that the Observance Operating Members Week immediately prior to November 11th would do a great deal to encourage greater interest on the part of the public. Now therefore, Eric R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim October 29th to November 12th, 2016, as Poppy Week in the City of Burnaby. Signed, Eric R. Corrigan.
Thank you very much, councillor Dollywell. Now, motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on October the 17th, 2016. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion, the delegation be heard?
The delegation here.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Now, delegation is the Royal Canadian Legion, who are here with us tonight. It's branch 83 and branch 148. The speakers are Tom Waddell and Peter Passanen. Please.
Yes, your worship, councillors. I would like to, at this time, introduce Wilson, the first vice president, Wilson Gerlay, Grace Browning, and Scott Browning from branch 148, our sister branch across I just got talked into doing this one here because our president is not available, so I'm doing this very off the cuff. Now, as you're aware, annually we contribute in excess of $60,000 to veterans, their dependents, and also sports teams, cadets, and other worthy causes. All the money we raise stays in Burnaby. Poppy Fund and the gaming proceeds are earmarked for this purpose. And that concludes my part of the thing. Thank you.
And he stole half of mine, but anyhow. On the 11th hour, the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, the Great War came to an end, and the veterans from that war founded what has now become the Royal Canadian Legion. And we volunteer to work in the community and raise money. And thank you, your honour.
Wait a minute, I'm going to come down there and give you this proclamation first.
I would be very remiss in not mentioning comrade Glenda McLeoy, who is helping on the November 11th committee, and I so acknowledge her also. Thank you.
Well, here you go. These are copies of our proclamation for you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
This is your first time we've had a plane.
There you go.
You're actually afraid.
That's right. So now you're going to get poppies out, is that right?
Yes, we are.
I knew there'd be a catch on this. There we go. Thank you very much.
The council at any time is more than welcome to visit our canteen. Thank you.
And when 148 gets their canteen together, you are more than welcome to...
And by the way, I will mention this, they didn't want me to say this, but yes, there is progress ongoing on the redevelopment.
No, they want to get everybody. Don't let anybody in the audience out of this either. They came to watch us, they deserve to pay. All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here with us tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. And councillor Johnson, you had a comment? He just wanted to say hello. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on then. A motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Good night, everybody. Item A is the city clerk. It's the certificate of sufficiency for resident initiated LSAPs. It's been moved and recommended. Councillor Dollywell?
Sorry, your worship, I didn't mean to do this.
We've got a mischievous group tonight. All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item B is the Financial Management Committee. Councillor Johnson, please.
Mr. Halloween pushing the button tonight. Your worship, on behalf of the committee, I would move that council provide a grant in the amount of $100,000 to the Burnaby Board of Trade for the yearly operation of the City of Burnaby Economic Development Programme, which is to be paid in quarterly installments of $25,000, commencing 2016, October 1st, and continuing in January, April, and July of 2017. Your worship, this is the annual grant to the Board of Trade. Council will be aware that the Board of Trade quite well organizes and operates our economic development programme on behalf of the city. At the committee on Thursday night, we had a presentation from Mr. Holden and Mr. Bassett on the status of what they're doing. They have an active plan for 2017, and recommending that the committee, the council, adopt the report, this before us.
Thank you. Councillor Jordan?
Yes, just before you worship, every year when this resolution comes by, the Board of Trade is kind enough to come and make a presentation to the Financial Management Committee about their activities over the past year, and it really is quite impressive that the amount of work that they do and for what originally was a rather small organization has grown exponentially and has become a really vibrant part of our community. So every year they make suggestions to us about ways we can improve our relationship and things that we can do together better, and also they recognize the excellent value of the joint work that we do with the city and our staff that participate in their various committees and the kind of work that we're doing together to promote business and economic development within Burnaby. So they're doing a great job, and I fully support us continuing with the grant.
Thank you, and I've got a comment that I don't think I've seen another relationship with the Board of Trade in any of the cities, certainly in the lower mainland, but I'd even venture to say across Canada, as healthy as the relationship is with the Burnaby Board of Trade, who are consistently part of our planning initiatives, who work with us as participants in our committees, who are consistently engaged in commenting on what the city is doing and what impact other projects will have on the city. They work very hard on international relations, they coordinate a significant amount of functions for our local business community. We just finished hosting the luncheon with them for our Hall of Fame business and the nominees for the Burnaby Excellence Awards in Business, and they're coming up in November. I could list just dozens of ways in which they continue to promote the economy of our city and are always there to back us up when we're trying to implement new initiatives and look for opportunities to be able to increase the businesses in Burnaby. So just recently, we were out on a tour of Lake City, for instance, with them, visiting businesses with the Board of Trade, just to say hello, ask them how they were doing, and ask them about anything we could do, either as a Board of Trade or the city, to help make their businesses flourish. And that, again, very positive experience and shows to the business community that city is working with business to create a vibrant economy. And I think one of the things we've recognized from the very beginning is that you can't have a great city without having lots of great jobs, and Burnaby has been very lucky to have better than a one-to-one job ratio, better than a ratio of one job for every citizen that can work in our city. I think that's, you know, something for all of us to be very proud of, and it comes from working hand-in-glove with the organization that represents our businesses. So I have no hesitation in supporting the fact that we contribute what is a relatively small sum every year to make sure that they're working on our economic development for us and alleviating a part of our city business that would likely be more expensive if we had to run an economic development department here in the city. All right, so you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Worship is regarding temporary financing bylaw. I would move that council authorize staff to bring down a bylaw to permit borrowing of up to $2 million as required during the 2017 January 1st to December 31st, repayable on December 31st, 2017.
Second motion.
Your worship, this is a housekeeping issue. The Local Government Act requires us to have a line of credit in place. I understand from staff that we've only used it once in the last 10 years, and that was because a cheque was late coming from an investment house, and it was like a 12-hour period where it was needed. But other than that, we don't use this on a regular basis, but this is required by the Local Government Act so that we are able to issue cheques as needed.
That's right, and if people get confused, we have no debt. The idea of having a line of credit is simply because sometimes transferring money can take time, and as a result, we have to have some resource to be able to get quick money, and that line of credit will allow us to do that until we make the necessary transfers. So that is appropriate to have in place and certainly a requirement. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Next item, your worship, is regarding Burnaby Business bylaw, business license bylaw. I would move that council authorize staff to prepare a new Burnaby Business License bylaw as outlined in the report.
Second.
Your worship, this report is an update to our bylaw. I understand, I'm trying to think of the number, 1984, I believe, was the last time it was amended. This bylaw is bringing some of those fees into alignment with inflation over that period. I think if you look at the rates that are within the bylaw, it's still pretty reasonable rates, but seeing that cost of business in the city has gone up. What this report also does is establish a new scenario whereby licenses that expire the end of January, December, sorry, are valid for 180 days, after which then they are canceled if business doesn't renew their license. The report also establishes a fine or interest charge for those businesses that don't pay their businesses within the period prescribed. I think it's pretty straightforward, it's comparable to most of our neighboring municipalities, but seeing that it is bringing the business license bylaw into the 2016 era, the rates are a little more representative of what it actually costs us to deliver services to that sector.
Yeah, and I thought some of the other ideas that were in here, including the conditional license while we're going through the necessary processes to provide the full business license, I thought was a good idea, and the distinction on not-for-profit licenses, another good idea, and the special events. There were some good things came out of this review. It's 1984 is the last time we had a look at it. That was before I was on council. That's a long time ago. Something I didn't get my grubby little fingers into, so I'm sure it was working fine. I do, though, appreciate the changes that were made. I think they reflect a good updating of what we're doing, and I wanted to just, out of this, one of the big highlights is the number of yearly business license applications that are filed in Burnaby, and you can see the numbers continue to go up. Every year, there's applications received, but each year they go up, and we've seen a 20% increase in those applications over the last four years. So that shows that business is alive and well in the city. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Next item, your worship, is regarding Burnaby 125 and Canada 150 celebrations. I would move that council approve Burnaby's 125 and Canada's 150 anniversary events as outlined in the report. The council approved the receipt of $75,900 grant received from the Ministry of Canadian Heritage under the Building Communities Through Arts and Heritage Programme to celebrate the city's 125th birthday, and the council approved an additional expenditure of $205,000 from operating gaming fund for extended year-long programme to celebrate both Burnaby's 125th and Canada's 150th anniversaries as outlined in the report.
Second motion.
Your worship, the report sets out a comprehensive plan for 2017, which is, as stated, Canada's 150th and Burnaby's 125th birthday, seems not that long ago since the 100th birthday. The report calls for several celebratory events. Details are still yet to be confirmed, but they were looking at some celebratory events around the city that will involve as many citizens as we can in various events in the coming year. I think we want to make it a good celebration, both at the national level and more close, most close at hand, Burnaby's 125th birthday. I think staff have done a good job on recommending some conceptual ideas, and there'll be a further report coming forward in the future with specific dates and events.
Thank you, and this is a good opportunity for me to say to the public, if you've got any great ideas, it's a good time to contact us and send them in, you know, because it's going to be a terrific year, our 125th birthday at the same time, Canada's 150th birthday, celebrations going on all over Canada, but special celebrations here in the city of Burnaby. And if you can think of some interesting ways to be able to bring those two concepts together, 150th and 125th of the city, then please give us those suggestions. We know we're going to be enhancing a lot of the existing events that we've had to celebrate Canada Day and looking for some unique events for Burnaby, but if there are some ideas out there or people want to take on some ways to celebrate the 125th, we'd be more than happy to hear from them. So it's not just our staff and council and the Parks Commission and committees doing it. We encourage not-for-profits businesses and citizens to get involved in celebrating Canada's 150th birthday and doing it in a special way for the city of Burnaby, who are also celebrating an important birthday that year.
I was thinking about whether they were going to update the centennial song, but there wasn't much appetite for that.
All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much, councillor Johnson. So we move on to the manager's report. This is the 2017 meeting dates for regular council, public hearings, boards, committees, and commissions. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is planned amendments to the Burnaby Business License bylaw, the Burnaby Cab Regulation bylaw, and the Burnaby Home Rental Business License bylaw, repeal of the Burnaby Automatic Vending Machine bylaw of 1946, and the Burnaby Cabaret Regulation bylaw of 1934. That's right. We still have vending machines, but we don't have cabarets, I don't think. Is there any discussion? You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item three. This is to provide council with information relating to the fire department's activities during the third quarter of 2016. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item four. This is to request council approve a promotional initiative and donation of revenue from Burnaby Village Museum Carousel Ride Sales on December 10th, 2016, to the Burnaby Christmas Bureau. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item five. This is an important project coming forward. This is to request council approve a detailed geotechnical investigation of underground conditions in order to establish a cost framework for a covered sports box at Burnaby Lake Sports Complex. I've been out to see a couple of those projects in other jurisdictions. There's one, I think, in Port Moody and one in Langley. Councillor Volco and I went out to see some of them. It really will add another, at a relatively modest price, add another venue in our city that will give people an opportunity to practice a number of different sports, but to do it undercover and in an environment like ours where it rains just periodically, having some activities undercover is always a good idea. Councillor Dollywell?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to add to what you have said. This facility would certainly help the shortage in dry space that we have for many, many sports these days. As a covered sports box, we'd be just like a year-round facility, your worship. We have other three, what we call the cross boxes. Both boxes, they are open, but with the weather, as sometime, the people have to be concerned with the elements, they don't come out, but this would be a facility which would be available. Perhaps I'm assuming there would be also perhaps lighting available done in conjunction with the covered roof. So in late in the evening, there could be the dry space could be used for many sports. It could be ball hockey, it could be lacrosse, or street hockey, doesn't really matter, it's just as available. So as you mentioned, it is a reasonable cost, which allows you to a fair amount of dry space available to our community users. But this also has an added benefit, it's next to the arenas, your worship. There is some time, even during lacrosse season, if for some reasons we do need floor or some reason, there's some space available, made available outside. You can also add, as a sort of facility adjunct to what's available at the Copland Arena, sort of help the staff in some time, just filling in on some of the shortage of dry space. So I am very happy to see this come forward, and I'm hoping that we can get something going pretty quickly to give this thing, which has been in need for many, many years. Thank you.
Yeah, I can see it doing things like a table tennis tournament under it, for instance. So there's lots of options that this space will give us. Councillor Volco?
Just very quickly, I know councillor Dollywell's been involved with this in his past role as Chair of the Commission. I just wanted to acknowledge current Commissioner Lee Loftus and past Commissioner Matt Foley, who have put in a lot of work and put in a lot of pressure on folks, I know, in order to advance this proposition, and so I just thought publicly I'd acknowledge their role in this.
Well, and if we can do it in an affordable way, then it's repeatable. If it's really expensive, it probably isn't. So the reality is, we want to be able to get a kind of project that we can utilize in other parts of the city to develop dry space that is relatively inexpensive to maintain and inexpensive to build, but gives people an opportunity to play a lot of the sports that they want to have in a covered setting, but not necessarily indoor, where we don't have to pay for things like air conditioning and heating and all of those other costs. So it can work extremely well. I've seen the facilities, and they're highly utilized, and this location is perfect. You know, you can even go undercover to be able to practice things like soccer. So teams can work on their drills and work on their training in that kind of a facility. So let's see how it works, but I'm happy that we're moving forward on a project like this that may very well be repeatable in other parts of the city. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is to request council bring forward a bylaw to appropriate $230,280, inclusive of GST, from capital reserves to finance two projects in Parks Recreation and Cultural Services. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. This is to request council bring forward a bylaw to appropriate $1,988,786, inclusive of GST, from capital reserves to finance the perimeter trail in Central Park. And I want to mention, this is another great project that we're doing, is one of the things that came out of our survey of Metro Town residents was that they wanted more opportunities for walking trails around the park and to be able to have trails that were on the periphery of the park and not necessarily going into the park. And this new project is going to allow a contiguous trail all the way around the park. That's going to be a big help to the people who go up there to do running and the walks that go on there, all during the course of the year, and will also give an opportunity for people to be able to run or walk around the park in a really safe environment because they're next to the street and under lights. So that, again, gives more utility over the course of the evening hours. Councillor Johnson?
If our relay will really like this. I know, having attended it a couple of times on behalf of the city, there's some parts of it that's easier to run around than not. I'm just curious, I have a question through you to Mr. Ellinwood. How far setback is it from Mount Eeyore?
Your worship, through you. It'll be setback, like the report says, depending on utility corridors, et cetera. It'll be at least two meters setback.
Two meters, okay. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, questions being called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item eight. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the North East Burnaby Roads and Intersection Improvement Programme. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item nine. This is to obtain council approval to extend the city's GIS, geographical... This is to obtain council approval to extend the city's GIS, Geographical Information System, Enterprise License Agreement with Essery Canada Limited. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 10.
The recommendation, item ten.
This is to request funding approval for a new recycling truck. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 11.
The recommendation, item 11.
This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the supply and delivery of two bucket trucks with service body. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 12.
The recommendation, item 12.
This is to obtain council approval for a one-year contract extension for flagging and traffic control services. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 13.
The recommendation, item 13.
This is to obtain council approval for a one-year contract extension for 32 individual contracts for hired equipment services. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 14.
The recommendation, item 14.
This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the supply and delivery of sand and gravel aggregates. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 15. This is a four-story mixed-use development Royal Oak Community Plan, and this is authorization to forward this application to a public hearing on November 22nd. Questions being called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. I want to let you know that I have November 22nd as the date for the twins, my son's twins, to be born. That's the number I got in the draw that we've had, so I might not be able to be here at the public hearing. My fingers are crossed. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 16.
The second motion.
This is an apartment tower with street-oriented townhouses and live-work units in the Metro Town Town Center. This is authorization to forward the application to a public hearing on November 22nd. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you very much, your worship. I was the one who, I don't know whether I tabled it or referred it back to staff or whatever, this application, when it first came forward in September, I believe, because I was concerned about the property next door on Nelson Avenue and whether or not the developer of this site had made appropriate efforts to purchase that site and include it. And in my opinion, would have made a better development if we could have included that property as well. And I supplied information through our staff from the developer about the offers made, rejected, and remade, and all of the things that went back and forth between the owners of the Nelson property and this particular developer. And I'm satisfied that they did indeed make a concerted effort to purchase it, but it was not successful. And I've also met with staff and talked to them about the potentials for the development on the Nelson property on its own. And so I'm supporting this going forward.
Right. That, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And item 18. This is nonprofit seniors' rental housing development. Oh, sorry, 17. Sorry. It's a townhouse Edmunds Town Center plan, and this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on November 22nd. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. I'm always happy to see nonprofit seniors' rental housing development. And I, number 18. And this is to seek council authorization to forward this application to a public hearing on November 22nd. And this, again, is a good development. This is the Fairhaven site that's having a development of another, what, 130-odd units? So it's a very positive addition. That's right down in my neighborhood, and I congratulate the Fairhaven United Church Development for doing an excellent job in bringing this forward. And thank you to our staff for working so hard with them. We'll see how it goes. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion, the committee, rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, and carry. Report that the report of the committee be adopted. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Bylaws, Counselor Jordan, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. For first reading, I move that Burnaby zoning amendment by law 13665 be now introduced and read a first time.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For first, second, and third reading, I move that Burnaby bylaw is number 13658, 13659, 13660, 13661, 13662, 13663, 13664, 13666, 13667, and 13668 be now introduced and read three times.
Second motion. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For consideration and third reading, I move that Burnaby zoning bylaw 13579 be now reconsidered, I'm sorry, and read a third time.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And for third reading, reconsideration and final adoption, I move that Burnaby zoning bylaw 13633 be now read a third time, reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal affixed thereto.
Second motion. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
And last but not least, consideration and final adoption, I move that Burnaby Business bylaw 13653, Burnaby Taxation bylaw 13654, and Burnaby Capital Works bylaw 13655 be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal affixed thereto.
Second. Moved and seconded. Counselor Volko?
Oh, ghost, the ghost.
I don't know. The clerk's looking pretty suspicious over here. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much to council and to staff, and thank you to everyone else who is with us tonight.